We've seen you.
Meeting is called to order. Still, if you'd please read the call.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session and a special meeting on Tuesday, December the 13th, 2005, at 5:35 PM and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session Item A: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property.
There are motion by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Orell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll be in executive session. Good evening, everyone. This meeting is now called to order. If you'd please stand and join the following students who are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Priscilla Lugo, 7th grade at Vella Middle School; Glenn Nicole Villarreal, 8th grade at Vella; and Ashley Perez, also in 8th grade at Vella.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and indivisible.
Commissioner Longoria, if you'd lead us in the invocation this evening?
Sir, this being our last meeting for the year, we ask the Lord for continued blessings. We thank him for all the blessings that we received this last year, in our families, professionally, spiritually. We recall upon the tragedies that this nation suffered and plenty of the celebrations that it also had to celebrate, and let us reflect on that. And we ask our dear Lord for blessings for this upcoming year, for our families again, and that we may live every day in his holy name. And in this we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, let's see. Item 1.
Item 1, consent agenda items A through K.
Second. Motion to by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Ben Court. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item 2, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2005-1448 to amend Chapter 18 of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances, adopting windstorm construction standards.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. We're here before you once again as far as bringing you this ordinance regarding windstorm construction standards. Last time, you may recall, we tabled it due to some language that we needed to correct. Right now, we have the corrected version with the language, and we're asking for your approval.
You've got those corrections now?
Yes, sir.
You're comfortable with the wording?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? If not, what is the action? What's the wishes of the commission?
To close public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action?
I approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Santiago. Item 3.
Item 3, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2005-1202-E, amending and adding fees to Chapter 42, Article 3, Section 42-101, rates for emergency medical services.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. Before you, we have amendment on some fees and also a new fee. Basically, what's happening at Medicaid and Medicare will be disallowing us to charge for medical supplies, so we're asking for this increase to offset those costs.
When is that supposed to take effect?
The Medicare study will start January 1st, so on your second reading, this will become effective.
Okay, all right.
Which will be immediately about a week after.
Is there any question? This is a public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Hernandez.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action?
To approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Before I close, sir, one more thing. I'd like to invite you all for our tour giveaway on the 17th. It'll be at 8 o'clock. It'll start at 8. It'll finish until we give all 350 families at Dean Porter Park Pavilion.
What day?
It'll be this Saturday, 17th. Also, same as PD.
This Saturday?
It'll start at 8 o'clock. Police, I think, are doing the same thing.
Is it the same day as the police?
Yes, sir.
Well, that ought to be interesting.
Hopefully, it'll make it quicker for all of us.
Penny, what time do you start?
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock?
8 o'clock it'll start.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good luck on that, and also good luck to the Police Department. Before I forget, at the end of the meeting, all of us are gonna be able to give our Christmas wishes, but I do want to remind everybody in the audience that we've got some low-fat, low-cholesterol, low-sugar cake in the hallway, so please, you can indulge yourselves, and you don't have to worry about violating any diet during the holiday. We made sure of that. So please help us with that. It is for the benefit of the people visiting our audience and with us tonight. Next item.
Item number 4, public hearing and action on the Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. Once a year, the city is required to prepare an accomplishments report known as the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or better known as the CAPR. The CAPR includes all expenditures and accomplishments that are cleared out by the HUD entitlement grant funds. On the screen, you will see a table of which you have a copy of. The table on the screen is slightly modified under the housing subcategory. On the first line, you'll see that the numbers are slightly different. The table showing the type of activity on column 1, that would be the housing activity. They are broken into five broad categories. The second column indicates the number of accomplishments underway. For example, under the housing category in the first line, it shows that there are 21 underway activities or projects. The third column indicates houses that have been completed, and they totaled 71. The fourth column indicates the total for the underway and completed. The fifth column shows total dollars dispersed for the respective activity, as well as the grand total at the bottom of the page. This is a pie chart that is a good visual, showing the amounts that have just been discussed. As you can see, the public facilities accounted for 54% of total disbursements, followed by housing, which came in at 27%, public services at 15%, homelessness at 3%, and demolitions at 1%. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. This is a public hearing.
Any comments from the public? Any questions from the commission?
Don Curry's got a comment?
No.
I'm Don Curry. I'm the director of the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, and I was basically here to comment on the CAPR. I'm sure that all of you, as commissioners, haven't had time to read this, and it's pretty long. It's a pretty long report. An extra paper? And basically, what the CAPR is, I mean, just for a little background, the CAPR is basically the city's official report to HUD on what it's done with its community development block grant, housing opportunities made equal, and emergency shelter grant programs. It's prepared every year in coordination with the three-year and the one-year action plan. And it's basically the narrative piece describing the city's activities, and a financial piece indicating all the money that's been expended, the projects it's been expended on, the amount that's been expended in the fiscal year, and it's all totaled up over a series of, basically all totaled up for a series of years. The report's basically due at the end of this month, and we had an opportunity today to sit down with the city staff and to go through some of the numbers that are basically contained in the report. And obviously, we're primarily concerned with the housing numbers. In our review of the report today, there were several discrepancies that were noted in the report, particularly as relates to the narrative section tying into the financial section, and basically included the number of units that were produced, some of the funds that were awarded and actually received, and whether the narrative report basically tied in with the data that was being inputted into what HUD calls their IDIS system. Remember, Mr. Medina and Ms. Garza, they assured us they would look over the report again, and basically, we also volunteered to be ready to assist them in correcting any of the numbers that basically need to go into the report, and also trying to tie the financial payments as to what's recorded in HUD's system and what's actually been paid out of the City Finance Department, trying to reconcile those numbers together, so the report, when it's submitted, is going to be an accurate reflection, and will tie in with the city's own, and tie in with the city's own books. And I basically just have three other points about the report that basically concern us as an organization. First of all, I know you all are familiar with the HUD monitoring that took place a year and a half ago, and as you're aware, one of the issues was the reporting of program income, okay? In the financial section of this report, the program income is still not being recorded, okay? It is mentioned in the narrative part of the report, but again, in HUD's system, it doesn't show up as being collected by the City of Brownsville. This was an issue that's been brought up before. I know it's been brought up numerous times. It's been 16 months since HUD reported it, and I think before the report gets sent in, we should make sure that the number is showing up in HUD's system and that the number is the right number, and there's not gonna be any further question about, you know, is it there or isn't there, or who's getting it or who's not getting it, and it basically needs to be reconciled in the report. The second piece we're concerned about is also, as you're aware, the City of Brownsville is also on a deadline to commit funds, has to commit home funds within a two-year period of time, otherwise those funds are subject to what? To recapture by HUD. In the HUD's system, on the last day of the fiscal year, 9/30/2005, there was a project set up in the HUD's system for about $619,000 of home funds for a rental rehabilitation project. I haven't been here all summer. I don't know what's been going on with the City Commission. I'm not, I don't know if there's been a project that's come before you for $619,000 of home funds for a rental rehabilitation project, but in any case, that project is not showing up in the CAPR report, okay? The importance of that setup is that that's the exact amount of money that needed to be set up in order to avoid HUD coming in and saying the funds were not committed, okay? But in order to set up that project, you know, I would assume that would've come before you, and there would've been a contract in place, and those funds would've been committed and then set up in the system. If that was the case, again, that project should be showing up in the system and should be reported on a regular basis. And the last thing is basically the chart that I gave you, and we had a very good, we met about two months ago with the mayor, we met with Mr. Culper, also met with us, and some other members of the community, and we had a very good, and we had a very good discussion about housing, about moving forward, about getting back on track. I think all of us, we acknowledge the importance of providing affordable housing to the City of Brownsville, and we recognize, you know, we want to be about the business of providing that in the most cost-efficient way that we possibly can, and produce the most value for the City of Brownsville, and we're committed to do that. We made, we paid up a lot of money. We have complied with everything that's been asked of us in terms of moving forward. We want to move forward, okay? I think if you look at the sheet before you, and this data is pulled from the CAPR report, and I'm not going to mention it, but if you look at the cost per unit, you can see what CDCB's relative value is in terms of how much home dollars goes into each unit, and you can see we can do on a three-to-one basis what anybody else is doing right now. That report from last year is also, you know, remember too, that we could only commit funds for two months. So all but two of the houses that were produced last year, we produced, and we could only commit funds for two months, okay? So just from our point of view, you know, we think we've done everything that we can do to satisfy, you know, both the commission, we think we've done everything we can do to satisfy the reporting agencies. We're anxious to move ahead. We have about 400 lots that we own in the City of Brownsville at this time that are already developed.
Mr. Curry, I'm sorry.
And we basically, again, as part of the comment of the impact, we'd just like to point out our impact in relation to the other entities, and, you know, welcome moving forward with the city in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thanks.
All right. This is a, this is a public hear-
Can I just-
Sure, go ahead.
Concerning the difference in the dollar amounts that Mr. Curry referred to as the first item, we just pointed out in the pie chart and in the table that there were, a discrepancy was a typo. We have corrected those numbers. Concerning the program income.
I'm sorry. When you say typos, these were typos within injured departmental, or were these typos on something that was officially sent off?
If you see the whole document, you'll see that the main body of the CAPR has the correct numbers. He's talking about one particular table in which the numbers were not consistent with the IDIS report. He pointed that out. We had already caught it, as a matter of fact, last week, so we made the corrections. That's the reason we presented you a corrected table with a corrected chart.
My suggestion would just be, let's be accurate. These aren't the types of documents that we want typos on.
Yes, sir. I understand that. We're still going over the CAPR, and it's not due until December the 27th, so until then, we're gonna continue to tweak it and refine it and make sure that, you know, it's a document that's accurate.
Thank you, sir.
Now, the program income, of course, as you all know, we received notes from CDCB late last year. The city planning department was not prepared at all with a, you know, to handle these notes, but since then, we've made a lot of progress. We've hired a person to keep track of the program income, to keep track of also the principal and the escrow account. So from that, you know, from last November to today, it's like a night-and-day situation. We have program income, which is good for the City of Brownsville. We can invest that money into projects such as streets, parks, whatever. It has no strings attached. As far as commitments of projects, we've been working with HUD for a few months, as you know, and we're almost at the tail end where we're getting HUD's approval on some very important projects that will address much-needed multifamily housing, as well as rental assistance to families that are in most in need in the City of Brownsville. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
I'm sorry.
Close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Orell, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Orell, seconded by Commissioner Ben Court. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item number 5, public hearing and action to authorize Mr. Manuel Trevino to transfer the motor cab license on a 1995 Chevrolet Astro van from International Taxi to Brownsville Taxicab.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, Mr. Trevino requests to transfer his motor cab license from one company to another. This license would be number 69 out of 125 that are authorized, so we wouldn't be over the cap.
All right. Any, this is a public hearing.
This is basically a common practice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So move to close?
Motion to close public hearing by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Before we take a vote, Commander, you said that this is number 169 out of, I'm sorry, 69 out of-
Number 69 out of 125 that are authorized.
And how many of those 125 are authorized or filled? All of them?
This would be number 69.
Does that mean, does that mean that there's still another 50-something or 60-something that are available, or?
I think it would be-
Whatever that number is, so there's technically 50-plus that are available?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Motion to close public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by-
Me.
Commissioner Ben Court, I think. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Gotta speed up the draw there, David.
Hello.
Next item.
Item 6, public hearing and action to authorize the issuance of a new taxicab permit for a 1999 Chevrolet Lumina four-door, which Mr. Jesus Ica Vasos will be operating for Valley Taxi.
This permit would be number 70 out of 125 that are available.
This is a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion to close. See how fast you were on that one, David?
Yeah.
Motion to close by Commissioner Ben Court, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ben Court, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna skip number 7 right now, Stella. We're waiting on Mr. Ana Hossa. Item 8.
Item 8, consideration and action regarding correction of the September 19th, 2005 City Commission meeting minutes. This item, according to my notes, Mr. David Vella was nominated as chair, and due to my oversight, I did not put that in the actual minutes. I have submitted draft minutes, including him as committee chair, for review.
All right. Jim, is there any problem with this amendment?
I was out of-
We're allowed to correct any mistake that's made in the minutes, and we have an obligation to do that.
Your notes indicate that Mr. Vella was appointed chair that night.
As chair.
All right. Any other questions?
Would it be, since I was absent at that meeting, I was out of town on a conference?
You can abstain. You can abstain on the vote, since you weren't here and you don't know what the minutes should reflect, and you can abstain.
Yeah, me too.
All right. This is an action item.
We do approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by?
You weren't here.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstained.
Two abstentions, Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Ben Court. Motion carries. Next item, item 9.
Stella, I was in abstention.
Yes, I have Ben Court, Hernandez, and Longoria for abstention. Item number 9, consideration and action to adopt Resolution Number 2005-047, re-accepting, reviewing, and amending, and re-adopting all of the provisions listed in the documents titled City of Brownsville, Texas: Amended Investment Policy, and the City of Brownsville, Texas: Amended Investment Strategy Statement.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, way back in 1986, the City of Brownsville established an investment policy, and every year, we are required to come before you, and if there's any changes, any amendments, we bring them to your attention, and you approve the resolution. The only changes that we have tonight is that as we open up new funds, we need to include some of these funds that we are investing in, in our investment policy. But the main, the main goal of the investments are to make sure that we have, that our investments are, we want to make sure we preserve the capital, we have safety, that's one of our priorities, and maximize our returns, and diversify our investments. That's the key to the investment policy. We recommend that you approve this resolution.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Orell, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.
Item number 10, consideration and action-
Hold on, Stella. Are you ready?
Yes.
I know you're just walking in, but I know you got a flight to catch. Let's go back to item 7.
Item 7, consideration and action to approve the plan of finance regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Good to see you. I'm Ana Hossa, the city's financial advisor, Australian House and Company. With me is Dave Gordon, one of our new associates in our office, and here we are, talking about this plan of finance that I think Mr. Gonzalez had shared with you a couple of weeks back. Basically, there were some concerns, I think, expressed informally, more than formally, over the fact that, A, can we borrow 17 and a half million dollars? What's the impact gonna be on the tax base, or the tax rate for that matter? And you'll find that the intent is to go out and get about 17 and a quarter million dollars for various projects, mainly the streets and computer equipment that I think is pretty outdated. One of the concerns that this commission's always expressed to us is that whatever it is that we're gonna finance, that whatever we finance, at least be financed over a period of time that is equal to the life expectancy on the, on the facilities or the equipment that you're gonna be getting, and that's what we've done, sort of mirror the financing based on what it is that you're getting. And thus, when you look at that little packet that Mr. Gonzalez shared with you, based on our preparations and our staff, you'll see that on the first, on the third page, if you basically don't do anything during the course of this year, if you find a page 2 or 4, you'll find on column L, as he's shared with you before, that right now, our payments on the existing debt are escalating. And they've escalated because they've been designed to be that way. It's worked in our favor in the past. The fact that we've had pretty aggressive tax collections, pretty aggressive tax asset value growth, and thus, anytime we've sold debt on your behalf, we solve it in a way to accelerate payments and be able to pay less interest for whatever it is that we borrow. Now, if, for example, you were to borrow all these funds and just lay it on top of your existing debt, the debt will probably cost you somewhere in the neighborhood of about four to four and a half pennies. There are a lot of issues out there in terms of what is the exact cost on the tax rate, but that cost can be easily be mitigated or reduced to practically nothing by doing a slight restructuring, which is something that Mr. Gonzalez shared with you, I think, in the past. Basically, what we've done is taken a piece of very selective issues that you currently have outstanding that add up to about $2,006,000. When you take those $2,006,000 that are currently scheduled to be paid over the next two years, and you extend that or eliminate for that amount of those first two-year payments, and extend over a period of another six years, then you're able to reduce pretty significantly where you have most of the stress in terms of where your payments are coming. In '07 and in '08, we take out a combination, about a sum of $2,003,000 in payments. You take those out, then you lay the new debt, the debt that you're contemplating doing, about 17 and a half million, you do it on the average annual basis and the way you're accustomed to seeing your debt, and you'll find that- and you'll find that the impact on the tax rate is going to be practically nothing. Why? Because the city's debt is paid pretty rapidly, and it gives us that flexibility. Someone expressed to us over the fact that this financing or this slight restructuring will cost you some money. The cost of the fact that you have a steady, a fixed interest rate on it, and now you're going to replace it with another interest rate. Well, the cost is about two hundred thousand dollars in today's dollars. It's actually less, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars to basically substitute about two million three, two million four of current payments. So by doing the substitution, you pay about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. If you were to not do anything with it, if you were to leave the existing debt alone and not do that refinancing for that cost, then when you bring in the seventeen and a half million dollars of new debt and pay it over a period of time, as we're accustomed, ten to twenty years, you'd be required to levy four pennies, at least four pennies. Each penny today in the city of Brownsville levies four hundred thousand dollars. So you multiply four times four hundred thousand, it's a million six. So we thought, as your advisor, looking at the bigger picture, that it was an easy call to make. Basically telling you, do this small restructuring, bring in the new debt. Your values are growing, you have tax rates that are aggressive, that are pretty good, almost at a hundred and two percent or a hundred and one percent. So, you know, it's not a rocket scientist call. And for that matter, that's what we wanted to discuss with you tonight, that if, in fact, you borrow this amount of money, that the impact will be insignificant. We're also very confident, despite the fact that we're doing this restructuring, that the rating agencies will embrace it, will embrace the proposal, the strategy. Why? Because we already paying in a very fast space, and it's simple. You all at home have some mortgages outstanding, and I'm sure if you go out and borrow money for your home, you have options of paying it over thirty years or fifteen years. Well, if you buy a house and you want to pay it over fifteen years, your payments are going to be much higher than if it was thirty years. Well, right now, the city, you could say, pays some about sixty-two to sixty-eight percent its principal payout over the first ten years. So normally, a city of this size, you're expected to pay about fifty-five to fifty-eight percent your principal payout. So whatever it is we're doing is extremely minimal, and we felt that this is a pretty reasonable proposal for you to contemplate. Now, whether you borrow seventeen or not, whatever you borrow, and you don't do the restructuring, that you have to contemplate raising or dedicating more property taxes.
The restructuring is a debt, former...
It's currently fixed.
Did you put that in here? Do we see this here?
When you say, when you see it here, if you look at column I on page three out of four, you're going to see column that says savings from two thousand and six restructuring, okay? What we've done is we've basically done a very strategic, taken out of maturities that are embedded in some of the bonds that are out there. You got currently, Commissioner, at least fifteen issues that are outstanding. So for you to tell me specifically what those are, I don't know them out of the top of my head, what specific series of bonds those are.
Well, I'd like to see the specifics. Now, let me just ask, didn't we refinance some of these bonds or all of these bonds before?
No.
No.
Okay. How, some of these, what's the life, what's the payoff or what year is the payoff of some of these bonds though?
How much, if you remember?
How many years is that left?
We're only taking out oh-seven and oh-eight. So let's just look at the bigger picture. If you have fifteen bond issues out there outstanding, you're going to have some issues that have maturities that end in two thousand and ten or eleven. Very likely, those bonds were issued back in nineteen ninety-one. If you have a payment of two thousand and seven or oh-eight, that's probably a cumulative sum of some maturities of various bond issues. It's not one specific bond issue. It's when I look...
Can we see that? It's because you don't show that to us here, and I don't think we got any information on that.
You don't see it because if I, I mean, there's no question, I will show it to you. It's not an issue. But I need to show you first globally what it is that we're doing.
Yeah, well, great.
So I want to impress upon you what it is that we're doing first, and then if you want the details of it, I can provide you with those details very easily. But I don't have them with me on hand.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay. We can provide you with those.
Any other questions?
I'd like to, I had talked to Mr. Gonzalez, and he said there was no problem with maybe tabling it till the next, our next meeting, so that we can see the, see these numbers and stuff.
He's showing us the numbers, Commissioner. I don't, I don't, we've already tabled it twice.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, the details is the bonds. You want to find out what bonds are going to be refinanced, and that's a fair question and a fair request. But that's not going to change the numbers that you're presenting here tonight. Is that, Mr. Anahosa?
No, not at all.
Okay. The numbers that you're presenting here are based on your projection on how we can finance this debt without incurring any additional tax levy, because this commission will not support any type of a tax increase.
Exactly.
So that's why we're doing it. So it's either support a tax increase or don't borrow this money, so.
I don't support a tax increase.
Well, then...
And you know, I've been the one that's been...
Oh, yes.
The strictest on that. All I'm asking is to see the details. Now, if there's a problem with the details and you want to keep that uninformed on that part, that's fine, but...
How, okay.
That's all I'm asking.
How are you uninformed, sir?
That's all I'm asking. We don't have the details.
You're, you're, you're...
I don't know why that upsets you.
No, I'm not upset. I'm concerned that you're trying to say that we're trying to keep in... Whatever information you need, you're entitled to. What I'm asking is the information that you're going to provide him, is it going to be anything that you're not giving us to us here this evening based upon the numbers? Is it going to change either the plan of finance, the plan of refinance, or the numbers with regards to the restructuring?
It's not going to change.
That's my point, Commissioner.
But again, we will provide the detailed information. I mean, even if you allow us to proceed tonight, this is just to move the wheels. I mean, we're not locking in anything. And in the end, in the end, Commissioner, you will see all the details conceivably, quite a bit in about two more months.
Okay, and the only thing is that, you know, I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez about this. I spoke to you a little bit about it. I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez, and, you know, he said there was no problem now. If there's a concern or there's something that we have to rush through, we'll tell us, but that's not the information I got this afternoon.
I don't know that we're connecting. All I'm telling you, Commissioner, is that if you proceed with this proposed plan of action, we still have to come back to you two months from now. Despite of all that, you will receive tomorrow by email, you will have that information wherever you're at, you will have it tomorrow. You still have two more months to bring it back on commission, if you want to, and discuss it even more. But it's not going to be an issue of, when you look at the total landscape of debt that the city has, all I'm telling you, where you need the breathing room is in oh-seven and oh-eight. And it becomes pretty obvious to anyone that when you lay this new debt, where the pressure is at. And I will describe all the details for you. But again, what you're doing tonight is nothing but moving forward with a plan that conceivably be brought back to you for final approval in about a couple of months, at least a month and a half.
Mayor, may I add that we're the ones that requested this number, not Noe or Estrada.
Understand that.
We're the ones requesting this. Thirteen point six million dollars, two projects, our streets and our computer system. That's thirteen point six million dollars. The rest is right-of-way acquisitions or reimbursements to things we've already done. Our goal was to keep the tax rate at sixty-eight cents, which restructuring is going to do. Now, there's a lot of projects that are not on here that we can add, and it would have been a tremendous burden on our taxpayers. Restructuring kept our tax rate at what it's been for many years, and that was the ultimate goal for us to achieve.
Right.
And we did that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, since Commissioner's going to be provided with the information tomorrow, I'd like to motion that we approve this, since the numbers aren't going to be changed.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Odoa?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioners Nettles?
Just go ahead and email all of us a detailed information. We will, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anahosa. We appreciate you being here on such short notice.
Thank you.
Item ten.
Item number ten, consideration in action to acknowledge the finance director's financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and five.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, we have provided you a book for the end of the year, fiscal year two thousand and five, with all the numbers. I have a PowerPoint presentation that's...
Condensed.
How condensed?
Condensed.
This page is.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There were some last-minute changes from this book versus the PowerPoint presentation. And the only thing that was added was that we went ahead and added the interest that because of the airport lawsuit that we have, they are, we went ahead and included... Previously, we had not included the interest that we're going to have to be paying. The PowerPoint presentation has that information. So this is more current than the book, and that's because I just got the information today. We can start on with, very fast, on our number two, page two of the handout. It shows you the general fund. The general fund being the largest fund for the city of Brownsville. This is the balance sheet, and towards at the bottom, we're comparing fiscal year two thousand and four with two thousand and five. The unreserved fund balance at the end of fiscal year two thousand and five is twelve million, two fifty-three. Now, these are all unofficial, because the audit has not been completed. On page three, it shows you what the budget looked like for fiscal year two thousand and five. And based on what's in the budget, we were showing a fund balance at the end of the year of seven point two million. On page four, it shows you the comparison in the very condensed between the budget and the actual numbers. For revenue, for instance, we had sixty-four million, five hundred and thirty thousand plus in budget. We had revenues, actual revenues of sixty-seven point eight million, or we had a positive balance of three point three million on the revenue side. The main one there, as far as increase, is the Brownsville P U B transfer. We had originally budgeted four million. We came up with five million, eight ninety-three. So that's almost one point two million dollars that we were not counting on at the start of the year. The other is the fees and services of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's a major increase also. As far as on the expense side, general government had one point seven over, actually less. This is, this is, this is, this surplus is because we underspent. In other words, the budget was higher and we spent less. So we have a positive variance on the expense size of almost three point four million. As a result, our fund balance grew by almost six point five million. On page five, this, again, this is just a comparison between fiscal year two thousand and four and two thousand and five. And again, we grew by nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. On page six, page six shows you the comparison of what makes up the revenues in the general fund. The majority is sales tax. Twenty-eight point forty-two percent of all revenues in the general fund comes from the sales tax, followed by fees and services of seventeen point six six percent. And the third is the property tax of seventeen point two nine percent. Even though property taxes is our number one revenue source, not all of the property taxes that are collected go to the general fund. The other portion goes to debt service. On the general government, on the expenditures, the main one is public safety. Fifty-seven percent of all general fund expenditures are in the public safety area. We ended the year with around a nineteen, a little close to twenty percent reserve. On page seven, it shows that the revenue succeeded expenditures by nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen. On page eight, has a history of the fund balance from nineteen ninety-three all the way to two thousand and five. And the two columns to the right shows the reserves based on revenues, and then the other column is based on expenditures. So we need to maintain at least a fifteen percent reserve. We have been able to do that since, for all these years, with the exception maybe of nineteen ninety-three. On page nine, as I earlier talked to you about, sales tax being the number one revenue source for the city, the sales tax grew by five percent over this previous year. How are we doing this year? We're not doing well as far as sales tax. If you look on page ten, for the first two months of the fiscal year, we're over eleven thousand, four hundred, but we're below budget by a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. We will monitor this very closely, month to month. If we see any problems, we will certainly make any adjustments as we go through the year. The next fund is eleven, it's convention and tourism. We have a fund balance to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight seventy-one. Page twelve just gives you a comparison between two thousand and four and two thousand and five on the convention and tourism fund. Again, there, everything is there as far as... We did grow on the hotel motel tax. It went up forty-three thousand, two hundred and one between fiscal year two thousand and four and two thousand and five. I'm going to skip pages. We can go to page fifteen, is just the community development. This is all federal money. Page sixteen shows the revenues and the expenses, and again, it comes in and goes out. Page, on page, let's say, page nineteen, that's our debt service fund. We ended the year in debt service of two billion, two thirty-six, nine thirty-nine. It's always good to keep a reserve in our debt service, and we are maintaining that plan. Page twenty shows you the differences between fiscal year two thousand and four and two thousand and five on the debt service. Our debt requirements for two thousand and five were fourteen million, four ninety-five versus twelve million, four fifty-three, one ninety-eight. Even though the debt service requirements grew, we were able to maintain a, the tax rate at the same tax rate of sixty-eight cents as the previous year. There was no increase in the tax rate, even though our debt service requirements increased. On the next page, page twenty-two, shows you the landfill tipping fee increase fund. Again, there's a comparison between two thousand and four and two thousand and five. There were increases to this area, one million, almost one point five million. Our fund balance at the end of the year in the landfill tipping fee is six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two eighty-five. Airport, page twenty-four, there was a decrease on the aeronautical revenue by forty-three thousand, two forty. The major increase in, decrease in revenues were in the non-aeronautical revenues. If you look on page twenty-four, you see on the certain revenue accounts or one-time revenue accounts, which is the BF image ware and sale of a million property. Those had major decreases because they were just the one-time revenue source that we had in two thousand and four. They did not appear in two thousand and five. On page twenty-five, obviously, this had a major impact on the general fund. Transfers, transfers from the general fund listed on page twenty-five grew by two million, one eighteen, three seventy-four. Obviously, our fund balance would have been a lot greater had it not been for these transfers. And if you look on the expense side, on page twenty-five, we have that Zimmerman case of one million, forty-five thousand, nine twelve, that since the airport did not have the funds to pay, general fund had to pay for this additional cost. On the page twenty-seven, the Veterans Bridge revenues that we share with Cameron County on fifty-fifty basis for fiscal year two thousand and five, we had two million, almost two million four, as compared to two million, four fifty-seven, nine forty-nine the previous year. Again, all the money that we collect from the Veterans Bridge goes to the general fund. Page twenty-nine shows the motor vehicle parking system fund. There was a drop in the over-parking fees, but there was an increase in the parking meters by two thousand, three thirty-nine. Overall, the fund ended the year with a positive variance also. On page, page thirty-one, the transit system, operating revenues. This is just the operating grant. It does not include the capital grant. The operating assistance grant, we generated one million, one seventy-two, one sixty-eight in operating revenues. And then we had expenditures of three million, five sixty, one sixty-eight. The good thing about what happened at the bus fund last year is that a major expenses that were in the past being paid out of the operating assistance, and I'm talking about... that were in the past being paid out of the operating assistance, and I'm talking about maintenance expenditures on the buses, we now charge them to the capital grant, and the capital grant reimburses the city on an eighty-twenty versus the operating grant on a fifty-fifty. So we shift some of those expenses to the capital grant. As a result, our contribution for the operation was only five hundred and one thousand, one fifty-six listed there at the bottom of the page. We did get also six hundred thousand dollars from the state and one million, one ninety-four from the feds. The golf, Brownsville Golf Center, we can go to page, page thirty-three, the revenues have been, remained consistent from all these years, from 2000 all the way to 2005. It's pretty much the same, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine fourteen in 2005. On the expense side, the only thing that we don't have recorded here in the expense side yet is the depreciation. That's the reason why there is a drop between 2004 and 2005, and I'm looking on page thirty-four. Page thirty-five, if you look at the income or the, or loss, we had an income, net income of twenty-eight thousand, thirty-four on the plus side, of course. On the employee benefit fund, page thirty-seven.
Pete, but there was still a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar transfer from general fund?
Yes, sir.
Still?
Still, yes. The answer is correct, yes. On page thirty-seven, this is the health insurance fund. We did well in 2005, and one of the reasons why we did well is if you look on page thirty-seven, you look at the stop losses refunds that we received from T M L. In 2005, we received one point three million in stop losses. Those are refunds, and we also had a carryover from the previous year of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, twelve. So total revenues in this fund were ten million, seven forty-three, two eighteen, which include the refunds, and we had expenditures, claims, plus all the administrative costs of nine million, four twenty-five. So we ended up the year with a plus. By having pluses at the end of the year helps us maintain the same premiums for employees. So this is good for us. As you can see, our fund balance grew from one million, three eighteen, one eighty-one through one million, we increased by one million, nine oh seven, which now we have a fund balance at the end of the year of a little over three million dollars. Again, this is what we did. Two thousand four, two thousand five were a good year for us. Hopefully, two thousand six will continue. And again, the refunds are based, any claim, individual claim that exceeds a hundred thousand, if we exceed that, the stop loss insurance covers it. We also have the workers' compensation fund. We have retained earnings there of forty-eight thousand, six eighty-two. And then we also have the seeking annual leave fund, where we go ahead and accrue some of the, besides general fund, we accrue some of the outstanding balances, and we record them in this fund from various governmental funds. Finally, on page forty-one, these are the investments, again, that are, we were required to present to you on a quarterly basis. We have them in Tech Pool, Lone Star, Logic, M B I A, and we have some Merrill Lynch investments for the JIBIC. There is a drop between 2004 and 2005, and one of the main reasons is that most of the money that we had in 2004 were from capital project funds, from bond and C O funds. Since we did not issue any debt during fiscal year 2005, obviously, some of those accounts, cash-wise, was reduced as we were spending the money. Other than that, that's, again, that completes my presentation.
Any questions? All right, this is an action item to acknowledge.
Approve the presentation.
Second.
Motion to acknowledge by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Bennington. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pete. Item eleven.
Item eleven, consideration and action to determine what salary amount, if any, shall be authorized for the position of director for the Civil Service Commission for the city of Brownsville as per the authority set in section one forty-three point zero one two Texas Local Government Code.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, the item before you is to set the salary for the position of the civil service director. Staff is recommending that you set the salary at zero. We did a survey, I have a survey that we did, and the majority of the civil service directors in the state of Texas are within the city staff.
In-house?
In-house.
Under human resources or?
It could be under human resources, as long as it's within the city.
I agree with that. I'd like to make a motion.
Our recommendation is that at zero, the civil service commission does make the appointment. We set the salary. Our recommendation to them would be that they appoint someone from the city for this vacancy. We can revisit this depending on who they appoint, et cetera, at a later date.
I'd like to make a motion to set the salary at zero.
By Commissioner Zanetti, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Pete. Item twelve.
Item twelve, consideration and action on extending the terms of the World Birding Center affiliated site development to December thirty-one, two thousand and six.
Honorable mayor and city commission, the current agreement between the city and the World Birding Center calls for all projects to be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand and five. We ask you that at this time, you extend the agreement to December thirty-first, two thousand and six for the completion of the visitor center. The streets, common road is in place, the trails is in place, there's water and electricity to the site. We just need the visitor center.
All right, any other questions?
So moved to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration and action authorizing amendment number eighteen to the H N T B contract for design and bidding services for general aviation infrastructure phase two.
Mayor Commissioners, the purpose of this agenda item is to ask the city commission's action and consideration of an amendment to the umbrella contract with H N T B for aviation-related engineering services. Amendment eighteen, when approved, would provide funding authorization for design and bidding services for the general aviation infrastructure project phase two, which is scheduled to be funded by the F A A in March of two thousand and six. The contract is for an amount of seventy-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars, as is stated in section C of the proposed contract. Staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Bennington. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item fourteen, consideration and action authorizing amendment number nineteen to the contract with H N T B for design and bidding services for terminal apron expansion, rejuvenation of runway thirteen R, thirteen L, and seal coat of the South General Aviation aprons.
Mayor Members of the commission, the purpose of this item is similar to the previous item, but the tasks are different. The tasks to be done include the design of bidding services for a terminal expansion project, plus the rejuvenation of runway one-three right, three-one left, plus a seal coat of the South General Aviation aprons. The cost will be eighty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. It's paid ninety-five percent with A I P funds, A I P funds, and five percent P F C funds. That's a hundred percent federal funds. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Roy, seconded by Commissioner Bennington. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item fifteen, consideration and action to authorize the execution of a contractual agreement between the Texas Department of Transportation and the city of Brownsville for right-of-way procurement for the F M eight oh three project.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, what we have here is an item for F M eight oh three right-of-way acquisition. City's portion is four point three percent of the whole project cost, which comes out to seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. We recommend approval.
All moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Zanetti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Colonel. Next item.
Item number sixteen, consideration and action to award a professional services contract for the medical director's position for the Brownsville Fire Department.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, the state of Texas Health and Safety Code requires that the Brownsville Fire Department have under contract a medical director. The fire department has previously contracted for these services, and that contract expired at the end of September of this year. Since that time, the incumbent contractor, Richard Joe Ibarra, M D, has performed those services on a month-to-month basis. Our fire chief, Mr. Lenny Perez, has requested a new contract agreement from Dr. Ibarra. The responsibilities and duties of the medical director are stipulated under section three of the attached contract and are in compliance with state regulations. I will point out to you that under the local government code, this type of professional service is exempt from a competitive solicitation. I'd also like to point out to you that in our recommendation this evening, the amount that Dr. Ibarra will be compensated, or thirty thousand dollars per year, is consistent with the expiring contract. So our recommendation is that you award a contract for a period of two years to Dr. Ibarra.
Moved to approve?
That was going to be my question. How long is the term?
Two years.
Expiring at the end of fiscal year oh seven?
Oh seven, yes. It'll roll back to October first.
All right. Motion approved by Commissioner Zanetti, and seconded, I'm sorry, motion approved by Commissioner Bennington, seconded by Commissioner Zanetti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item number seventeen, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of computers to replace outdated computer systems for the municipal court.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, the purchasing department has solicited proposals from Dell Computers for the purchase of twenty-two desktop computers and twenty-two U P S units to replace outdated computer systems for the city of Brownsville Municipal Court. M I S technical staff evaluated the equipment at municipal court and determined that it is outdated, does in fact need to be replaced. As you know, they are installing a major new software package at municipal court. A lot of the feature sets of the new software require updated operating systems. The operating systems in the equipment that is to be replaced operates under a Windows two thousand platform, and the new systems will operate under the Windows two thousand three, which is the current platform. As a result, we are asking for your consideration and action to award this contract to Dell, and this is through a state contract that we access. The amount is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, and this is for the computers and the U P S unit. Of course, this is funded through the technology fund, which has a sizable balance.
Any questions?
All moved to approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Zanetti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Galapa. Before we get to the public comments, I'd like to give all the commissioners and myself an opportunity to end the year on a high note and extend their best wishes to our citizens. Commissioner Hernandez?
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I hope and pray for a great two thousand and six for all of our citizens. I wish everyone prosperity and good health in the coming year, and I want to wish a Merry Christmas to all my fellow commissioners, the mayor, and all of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Roy?
Merry Merry Christmas to everyone out there. Happy holidays. Hanukkah's on the twenty-fifth. Happy Hanukkah. Feliz Navidad, Profe Ano Nuevo para todo mundo. And my blessings, my family's blessings, and well wishes to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I want to wish all the mayor and fellow commissioners a Merry Christmas. Hope you all do well, enjoy your time off. Also, I want to address the people of Brownsville. I hope each of you continues to have good health and have better times. I know times have been tough financially, maybe some, you know, health-wise, but I hope everybody continues to have, has a great year, this upcoming year, and enjoys their holiday. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, I also like to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and to all the employees at City Hall, very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to each and every one of you. And to all the residents of Brownsville, I want to wish you a good, a good, happy holiday season, a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and may this upcoming year bring everything you all wish for and more, and may it be a safe, healthy, and Happy New Year to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennington?
I just want to tell everyone, the mayor, city commission, or the citizens of this community, staff, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and certainly, we want to make sure everybody enjoys the holidays safely and responsibly, and we hope that come next year, we'll have a much better year for our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Longoria?
Feliz Navidad para todos. De parte de mi esposa, de mi hija, de mi familia, la familia Longoria, les decíamos a todos los ciudadanos de Brownsville una feliz navidad. Y recordar de qué es la temporada navideña. Es el nacimiento de nuestro señor Jesucristo, y esta es una opinión personal. Ahora que vemos que en los tiempos mucha gente escoge expresarse en diferentes maneras, vamos a recordar de lo que es la temporada, lo que es el nacimiento de nuestro señor, y que todos estemos unidos en familia, y en amigos, y en amistades en esta temporada. Y bendiciones para todos, que todos la pasen bien, que Dios los bendiga.
Thank you. I want to take this opportunity to extend the best holiday wishes and thanks to this commission, to these commissioners, for helping get through this last year, a very eventful year. We certainly hope that the peace and prosperity part of the holiday season will last with us throughout the upcoming year. I'm thankful for having had the opportunity to serve the city under the year, and I also want to wish, on behalf of my family, extend all our best wishes to all the citizens of Brownsville, and that they have a safe, prosperous, and Happy New Year, and more than anything, that the citizens remain patient with their mayor and their commissioners. We are trying our best, and that they continue to pray for us as we continue to pray for our citizens. All right, public comments. Mr., oh, Father Roberto Diaz, Father Burke, regarding Vida, Valley Initiative for Development Father, you have three minutes.
I have speaker from the minute from right now.
Yeah, not a sermon today.
Okay. Well, as a citizen here of Brownsville, I come before you as a last resort because we've been trying to get Vida here to Brownsville. As you know, Vida stands for Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement. It is an economic development strategy for long-term job training for good-paying jobs with career paths. Valley and Faith has been working for a few years now to bring Vida to Brownsville. Why? Because it offers training to qualified applicants for jobs that exist here in the valley that pay eight fifty or more per hour and have a career path. Vida was founded by Valley and Faith in nineteen ninety-five, and the Valley and Faith leaders recognized the need for better jobs for residents and trained workers for businesses. Vida offers critical support to its participants so they can succeed in completing their course of study. The participants meet with counselors, they, we take away all the barriers that can prevent someone of, you know, poor economic conditions so that they can be able to succeed in life. And so it does assistance, including if they have children, you know, we try and help them with that. That's a barrier for some families. In the city of McAllen, for every one dollar invested, the city of McAllen receives two dollars and eleven cents additional sales tax, property tax, and other fees. And that's just McAllen. There are cities all throughout the Texas and the United States who also have similar programs. Vida can show its accomplishments, Vida has shown its accomplishments. There have been over three thousand, three hundred graduates since nineteen ninety-five. Eighty-six percent of those are employed here in the valley. Graduates earn more than an average of fourteen dollars and six cents an hour. McAllen, again, McAllen gets that two dollars and no cents back. With the three point three million that McAllen has invested, it has received matching grants from state and federal government of three point nine million. So the more the city has invested, the more the government, whether it's state or federal, has matched these programs. So I ask, as last resort for you all, to help in whatever way you can to help us get Vida here to Brownsville.
Thank you, Father Burke. Emile De Peña, regarding economic development.
We know that the Greater Brownsville Incentive Corporation has received approximately forty-nine point five million dollars between nineteen ninety-two and the year two thousand and four from the one-half cent sales tax. We also know that you all have appointed the members of the JIBIC board. According to city records, some of the incentives that have been paid by JIBIC include the Polo Field for two point five million dollars, Carling Technologies for one hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars. for $2.5 million, Carling Technologies for $129,222, Converge's Call Center for $1.8 million, Excel Bobbins and Plastic Components for $53,501, Rio Gulf Coast Alliance $240,000, ORC Industries $540,900, Titan Wheel International $4.5 million, and others for $8.4 million, for a total of $8.1 million. No one seems to know where the Polo Field is located, or where did the $2.5 million go? Okay? We also know that the businesses paid minimum wages, and some of them paid below minimum wages, and some of these businesses no longer exist. They're not here anymore. According to the city records, these, there are some categories that are used for the businesses to have received these monies, but only a very small part of the monies have gone back to job creation credit. And according to an article in the Brownsville Herald on October 15, 2005, the Texas Controller of Public Accounts does not report the actual number of jobs that are created or the effectiveness of these incentives. So ladies and gentlemen, we ask for some accountability, please. Thank you. Have a very happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Next, we have Reverend Jerry Frank, regarding taxes. Taxes, not Texas.
We need to.
On Sunday, an article came out in the paper about the Rio Gulf Alliance and how it's fizzled after waiting, spending $240,000 of city monies paid out by JIBIC. Why can't the JIBIC, or the City of Brownsville, or the Brownsville Economic Development Corporation answer some basic elementary questions that we've been trying to get answered for some time? For example, how many jobs are created by companies that receive incentives? What kind of jobs are they? How stable are they? What are the pay levels? Can't get that information. I don't think it's available, apparently. Why should Brownsville citizens trust BEDC and JIBIC to spend their hard-earned tax monies if they can't or will not provide answers to such basic questions? The McAllen Economic Development Corporation gets an annual ceiling of $500,000 from half-cent sales taxes for incentives for companies to relocate. Mike Allen, the president, a good friend of mine, says that companies that are attracted to relocate by incentives just aren't the kind of companies who will generally stay here in the valley. And the record shows that over the last several years, McAllen's been paying out its half-cent sales tax a million dollars a year to VIDA. Evidently, they find that a better investment than $500,000 a year in incentives. I've attended several BEDC and JIBIC meetings, and let me tell you, there's a great divide, a big disconnect between those folks and the hard-working, tax-paying parishioners that we represent. We find it hard to appreciate their investments in projects like the Phelps-Holland or Miller Ad Agency, or 2.5 money for this Polo Field nobody seems to know much about. Do any of you play polo? Why won't they invest in growing the people in our parishes? Why doesn't JIBIC invest in our people, the grassroots levels? Some city commissioners have suggested funding VIDA from the general fund, but we say, don't let JIBIC off the hook. You need your monies. This city is not rich. You need what you got. Providing good jobs and economic development for the hard-working taxpayers of Brownsville is JIBIC's mission and duty, and they're more than amply funded to handle the job. I keep asking, how is it that JIBIC can keep saying no, 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 when all of you keep saying yes, yes, yes to VIDA? Either you failed to communicate your support for VIDA to them, or your own appointees to JIBIC have no accountability to you. In that case, the tail is really wagging the dog. So what's the solution? Start appointing to JIBIC people who truly care about growing our people into good jobs, and will commit to doing so before they're appointed.
Next, we have Mr. Patamada, regarding the creation of committee, advisory committee.
Mayor, fellow commissioners, Merry Christmas to all of you, and we wish you Godspeed during the holidays. We know you work hard on behalf of the citizens, and I commend you for your public service. It's good that issues are raised and awareness is brought before this body. And it's all done with respect. Hopefully, you will hear and take into consideration, even though you may not agree with him. But sometimes, there's merit to it, and there's validity that should be taken to heart. I commend Mrs. Peña, Father Bird, and Father Jerry to come before you. Because when people stop coming, and people stop raising issues, that's when the community starts to die. So don't take it personal when somebody brings out a point, or maybe even criticizes you. I've been where you've been. I've taken a lot of heat, I take a lot of heat as a citizen, for standing up and speaking out for what others think about, but they don't speak out because they're afraid. And it's not easy for me to come here before you and speak on issues. I don't like public speaking. I never have. But I force myself. So, you know, we must go beyond the obvious, as Father Bird and Father Jerry did, and Mrs. Peña, by putting principle before politics. That's what should be done by public servants. And that's what I'm asking for in the Impact Fee Study Advisory Committee. I feel that we fail to adhere to the guidelines prescribed by Blacken Beach, who was hired by PUB at a tune of $220,000, $220,000 of the taxpayers' money. They advised us to not go to the Planning and Zoning Commission to form this committee for the impact fee study. Yet, this body appointed the chairman of that commission to the impact fee committee. It also appointed him as chairman without abiding by the requirements by posting the action on the agenda. I'll read you the agenda item. So I disagree with the city attorney here that what you all did was legal here. It says, "Consideration and action to appoint four members to the Impact Fee Study Committee." It doesn't say anything about appointing a chairman. And you're also taking it upon yourselves to dictate who's going to be chairman without any input from the committee you created. I think that's unfair to the rest of the committee members. I don't think you're serving the public's best interest by dictating what you want. You should listen and allow people to participate. It doesn't have to be your way or the highway. Also, Blacken Beach recommended, and I have here in writing, I can give you a copy. Blacken Beach recommended the city commission to act on PUB recommendations to appoint a separate advisory committee and to appoint persons to serve in the committee from the nominees suggested by PUB staff or others, meaning the PUB board. I take that to be. That wasn't done. This was done by the commission alone. I think none of these recommendations have been followed. Instead, we have a committee appointed by the mayor with no input from PUB.
Thank you, Mr. Long. We appreciate your input and.
I hope the voters take this into account when the election time comes. Because we're not following the process, and I think it's self-serving for some people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, last but certainly not least, Mr. Dagoberto Barreira, regarding cooperation in New Year for all commissioners and the mayor.
Honorable Mayor, honorable each commissioner, city staff, and my fellow Americans, the advertisement and the political signs are gone. Both sides of the city charter amendments express their views in different manner. Some, the debate is over, and everyone participated in a democratic way with full force. That is good for America, and that's the American way in politics. We're all Brownsvilleites. We're all Texans, and we're all Americans. So the time is now to close ranks and get going to build this city of ours to its full potential, the all-American city. In closing, I say that work together. Put PUB, at the PUB and at the City Hall, put a package together to suit both sizes, who I'm sure are interested in a better community for Brownsville and its citizens. I, as a conservative person, also want to expand the city with good businesses, full employment for everyone who wants a job. You're all good people. You just have different ideas. During this coming days of Christmas and greetings, please, close ranks, work together, and cooperate with your colleagues to the benefit of all Cameron County citizens. Follow the lead of this young commissioner. Mr. Edward Camarillo, I'm glad that the mayor has also waved his perks. Mr. Roy is thinking about it after a AG opinion. All of you do what is right, what your conscience dictates. I want to thank you for you giving us a tax cap that you all passed not to raise our taxes as seniors who are 65 and over. Now, have a Merry Christmas, though the loony left, seculars don't like it, but it's still Christmas. Merry Christmas and have a happy and prosperous '06, next year. Thank you.
And on those bright words, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Barreira.